Would you mind forwarding that to everyone? Thank you. Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Mason. It's time to call our October 26, 2020 meeting to order. Dan, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Present.
Councilmember Strickula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Here.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Here.
Mayor Grossman?
Here. All right. We're going to open things up as we have before with executive session for the purposes of acquisition or disposition of real estate or real property and employment and compensation of public employees. Our goal is to end executive session around 6:30, reconvene into regular session, only to take a quick recess and regroup for the seven o'clock, for a seven o'clock start time for the rest of the business meeting. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing acquisition and disposition of property and employment and compensation of public employees.
The move?
Second.
Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll see you back at seven o'clock. Would you mind forwarding that to everyone? Thank you. Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Mason. It's time to call our October 26, 2020 meeting to order. Dan, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Chance?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Present.
Councilmember Strickula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb? Councilmember Hunter Law?
Here.
Mayor Grossman?
Here. All right. We're going to open things up as we have before with executive session for the purposes of acquisition or disposition of real estate or real property and employment and compensation of public employees. Our goal is to end executive session around 6:30, reconvene into regular session, only to take a quick recess and regroup for the seven o'clock, for a seven o'clock start time for the rest of the business meeting. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing acquisition and disposition of property and employment and compensation of public employees.
The move?
Second.
Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll see you back at seven o'clock.
Yeah. This is called, yeah, called.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we are back. We did not end up taking our recess because we were meeting an executive session this entire time. So we are happy to be back with you. Thank you to those of you who are joining us in person. And thank you to those of us who are joining us via live stream or watching us latently on icrcTV.com or on ICRC TV. So we're glad to have you today. Thank you for engaging with us at our October 26 business meeting. We are going to start things off with a prayer. Pastor Jeff, Pastor Jeff Heslop is here to join us at the podium and will follow immediately with the pledge of allegiance. So if you could stand with us, please.
Yes, let's pray. Our Father, we are pleased to pray to you. You're so gracious to those that humble themselves in prayer to you. We thank you for that. We ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. May it be productive, Father. You have blessed this city with great government, very good government for so many years, and we praise you for that. We pray for wisdom among the council members, for harmony among them. We pray for their good health, the good health and prosperous families. We pray for the first responders that serve us so well, firefighters, those that serve medical emergencies. We think of our doctors and nurses. All of these are great gifts from you to us. We pray for protection for the sheriff's office, Mason police. We pray that they would be greatly respected for the work they do, for the service they do. Especially at this time of the pandemic, we pray for our teachers, the risk that they are exposed to, the students as well, Father, wisdom for the school administrators. We pray for our small businesses that are affected by this, that you would bless them and help them in their business. And of course, for the pastors and their congregations, the priests, they all need wisdom, Father, to help us through this time. Most of all, Father, we thank you for sending your son. And he died for the sins of the world. Whoever believes in him will never perish but have eternal life. We thank you for him most of all. We pray for the election coming up. It would be fair and free. We ask your blessing on that. And Father, we thank you that despite all that we pray or think, no matter how much we think, you do far more than what we ask. And so we thank you for that. And we pray all this in Christ's name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It's time to approve the minutes for the October 12 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for October 12? So moved, I'll approve them. Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain also.
Thank you. All right. Is it time for the city manager's report? Are we ready? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items, a couple of items that require motions, first of all. Is moving forward, and you have information, you pack it on the Christmas and Mason tree lighting ceremony that will be held on Friday, December 4th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. with a variety of activities that we hope will be adequate, even considering, I'm sorry, Christmas Mason tree line ceremony, December, Friday, December 4th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We are planning a variety of activities, accounting for current circumstances. It also includes our partners from past years. The American Legion has plans to provide beverage service there on the plaza. What they, and their plans include, as in past years, to split the profits from that with the Mason Parks Foundation. What is required from council is a motion to, to allow the American Legion to serve alcohol there on the plaza, because that is a public park space. So.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Secondly, around this time of year, city council typically authorizes the purchase of a holiday gift certificate in lieu of a ham and turkey, as historically for all city employees. Gift card choices this year have been explained, expanded to include the Yifty gift card to encourage traffic at local businesses. That can, if council would like to offer that again, it can also be done via motion.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Couple of other items. This is the last time this year you should hear me say this. We continue to get questions. The city is anticipating Halloween, rain or shine, this Saturday between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. And just a reminder to everyone, as in every year, participation in Halloween is voluntary. What we're really encouraging this year is residents that wish to participate in distributing candy, turn on your lights. And then we're encouraging trick-or-treaters to use that as their signal to, to participate at those homes. Those homes that don't wish to participate, just leave your lights off and please encourage your, your trickers and your treaters to, to avoid those homes that choose not to participate. A Mason police and fire will again be visiting this neighborhoods and distributing candy and encouraging safety. This year, the city is working again with Joshua's Place and Mason City Schools for the Mason Cares Program. The purpose is to provide a way for those in the community that have, have increased needs during the holidays to, to help provide those needs. The program includes adopting families, donating new unwrapped toys, and donations will be accepted through December 14th. Toys, clothing may be left in collection barrels. They'll be at the community center, municipal center, police department lobbies, the city facilities. The Area Progress Council's Economic Outlook Breakfast is planned for Tuesday, November 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. If any council members would like to attend, please let Jennifer Kendra know. And then heads up, city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 26th and Friday, November 27th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Community center will be open those days with limited hours and limited acts, limited hours and limited access. And finally, just a reminder to residents as well as council, the second wave of the Yifty gift card program funded by sewer fund amounts, those cards will be sent to the folks that participated in the first wave via email, encouraging folks to watch the week of November 1st for those emails to come into your inbox. They do come from yifty.com. So if you need to check your, your filters or there is, those are $50 gift cards that should be distributed that week. That is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Well, if technology is going well, do we have our online visitor yet? Okay. Item eight is recognition of visitors, and we do have a visitor that would like to join us tonight if he could, if we can get him connected. But while we wait, is there anyone from the audience here that would like to approach the podium and address council? Okay, I don't see any, anybody from our in-person audience. Anybody on the queue online? Okay. We're working on connecting virtually.
Perhaps council should move on the agenda. We're going to work.
Do that. Okay. How about, so we have a guest that has been wanting to join us to report on the progress of and success of CARES Act funding and PPP funding for Ohio District One, and that's Congressman Shabbat, who is the ranking member on the Small Business Committee. And so we may not be able to get him right away, but I know Member Nelson has prepared something that has just come up from the state of Ohio. So would you be willing to go ahead and prepare that? And maybe we can get. And maybe we can get Congressman Shabbat online while we talk about the state of Ohio? Thank you.
A lot of stuff has happened with the state of Ohio at the end of last week and today. Ohio Governor Mike DeWine and Lieutenant Governor John Houstead last week announced that the administration, in partnership with the General Assembly, is developing a package of more than $419.5 million in CARES Act funding to help Ohioans. This package includes funding for small businesses, restaurants and bars, hospitals, higher education, arts, nonprofits, and low-income Ohioans impacted financially by the pandemic. This package actually was signed today by the State Controlling Board and I believe became started today to distribute some funds. Breaking down the $419.5 million, of that, $125 million in CARES Act funding will be used to provide grants to small businesses with no more than 25 employees. The grant funding will help businesses pay for a variety of expenses, including mortgage or rent payments, utility payments, salaries, wages, or compensation for employees and contractors, business supplies or equipment and other costs. The application for the Small Business Relief Program will be available November 2nd, 2020 at businesshelp.ohio.gov. 50 million of the coronavirus relief fund will go to 47 community action agencies to provide rent, mortgage, water and sewage assistance to Ohioans in need. The assistance will help Ohioans pay outstanding balances back to April 1st of 2020. 37.5 million of the CARES Act fund will go for the Bar and Restaurant Assistance Fund. The fund will be available for Ohio restaurants and bars struggling financially as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Businesses with on-premise consumption permits will be eligible to receive 2,500 per unique business location. 62 million in CARES Act funding for rural and critical access hospitals. 100 million in CARES Act funding will go to support critical COVID-19 related services provided at Ohio universities and colleges, and that will include expanding testing for students, faculty and staff, and mental health services. 25 million in CARES Act funding will be designated for nonprofits, and 20 million will be in support of Ohio's world-class arts organizations. For a family of four with an annual salary of up to $52,400, they will also be able to apply for assistance through the local community action agency. As you know, 2.1 billion in coronavirus funds have already been distributed to our local governments, childcare, PPE, broadband access, and other critical areas. If you want more information on this, you can go to governor.ohio.gov. And the applications, you could go to businesshelp.ohio.gov, and the applications will be available again on November 2nd. So Ohio is really doing some great things, and it looks like, you know, a number of our businesses are going to be able to benefit from this, especially ours and restaurants. So this is good news for Ohio.
It is good news, and I'm thinking that while it sounds like a lot of money, 419 and a half million dollars, it may be consumed very quickly. So it's a good idea to familiarize yourself with the website. And for the rent, mortgage, water, and sewer assistance for families, I thought it was a little tricky to find out which community partnership group, the support group. Ours is Miami Valley Community Action Partnership, and it's actually in Dayton. So they lumped some communities together. Hamilton County has its own, but we're connected with Dayton's. And there's a button on the website you can push and you kind of have to search for it. It takes a couple of minutes, but it's there. So yeah, great news. And thank you for preparing that today on the spur of the moment because this is a very new update. And anything else from the state?
Actually, if he's not ready yet, I just have one more quick thing. So the Warren County Municipal League had a meeting the other day, and the Warren County Auditor, Matt Nolan, was there who kind of gave us an update. And he talked about Warren County, I believe, got 10 million in COVID funding dollars. And he was saying that, you know, Warren County doesn't really have that many expenses to use this money on, and it's kind of a use it or lose it type of situation. And so he did talk about that Warren County is going to be distributing their excess funds out into the political subdivisions of Warren County, you know, to help other businesses or or other needs of cities. You might know more about that than I do because I just I just found out about that. But it's kind of interesting because you might think, well, why don't we just give it back to the federal government? But what happens is if we don't use the money, it does go back, it gets redistributed to other political subdivisions. And it's good to use the money that Warren County has given, was given, or Mason was given, find a use for it because, you know, these, it's our taxpayer dollars. We have spent this money in in taxes to to be able to get this. So instead of, you know, giving it back and it being redistributed to other communities, it's really good to try to keep it within ours. So I'll be interested, maybe next meeting, I'll have more information on Warren County and what their status is.
Yeah, I'm wondering if they're going to announce that tomorrow. Warren County Commissioners meet every Tuesday at 9:00 in the morning, and you can listen in, and you can also dial in and give feedback and be recognized as a visitor. They've been researching different ways to allocate those funds. And something I haven't thought to mention until now, Warren County, I don't know if our community is completely aware, but they have a surplus of N95 masks that they are distributing for high-risk individuals who are more at risk for COVID-19 complications. And so that can be accessed, I believe you would call the Warren County Health Department for details on that, but the commissioners decided that that would be a good use of that, those resources in Warren County. Ashley, did you, or excuse me, Councilmember Chance, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, I noticed that there's there's buckets, right? But a lot of these bars and restaurants, I think, that have been, you know, impacted the most when the government shows up and shuts you down on March 15th and they can't operate. Now they're saying, oh, well, we're all nice and happy, we're going to give you 50% capacity. I've seen some people have to change their complete model, right? To where it used to be a restaurant, you come sit down to where you're doing something completely different. But like with this 125 million to small businesses, under 25 employees, and then you also mentioned a bucket just for bars and restaurants. Can they do both? You know, I don't want, I know you just are, you know, learning this yourself, but can they?
You know, I'm not sure, but I I do know, you know, I don't know, so I don't want to answer that. We do have limited information. It just came out, I think, Friday. Is that correct?
Yeah, it came out Friday, and then it was updated this morning. So it's it's very new. And I was under the impression some something about the bars and restaurants might have to do with liquor license fees.
Yeah, it it does, yeah. So I'm not sure if they can get both, but I'm, I do know that they have 2,500 for for on-premise consumption. So.
We've talked about small business relief probably every single meeting since the end of March, and I know in May, we passed a resolution, you know, asking the governor to open up the economy as much as he can with the least restrictive measures. And it has been really tough, but we want you guys to know that we've been fighting for you and that you're you're cared about and and, you know, we're really worried. And in Mason, we're fighting to try and keep these small businesses going. I'm glad that we approved another tranche of e-gift cards that have helped stimulate the economy in the local level. Over $275 has been used in about 75 Mason businesses. So that's pretty cool. There's a thing on our our screen. I'm moving over here. Any luck over there with our special guest? They're working feverishly over there. Oh, we're going to give it one more try. Hang in there, everybody. Anybody else have any questions or feedback as we? Nothing like live.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I did attend the Warren County Municipal League, obviously, as council's representative, and Diane has done a wonderful job of summarizing what went on. But I do remember Matt Nolan's comment is there's 82 pages of treasury regulations, and don't mess with the treasury, otherwise they're going to get their money back. So I'm quite sure with Joe Regelsberger, he will make sure that anything that we feel we are entitled to, we will be entitled, and we won't have to give any of it back.
If I can just comment on that. Yes, that is correct. There are some serious restrictions on what you can spend this CARES Funding Act for, and it has to be followed to the T. And I have talked to Joe, and if anything is even iffy, Joe has just thrown it out. He won't even take the risk, which is good. We don't want him to. But there are, yeah, 82 pages of.
82 pages.
What you have to go through to see if it's, you know, if you can spend this money on it, so.
Be sure that's taxpayer dollars and not private money.
How are we doing over there, Eric? I got a.
Okay, Mayor. It looks like the congressman is having problems with his camera.
Okay.
I think we will have him, I believe we'll try this here, we'll be able to have him via audio.
Okay, that's fine.
I think he's watching us, so he should be aware of that.
Okay, great.
If the congressman or his assistant is watching, he needs to unmute his microphone so we can at least be able to hear him.
All right, it just popped up.
Congressman, I believe we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about all the all the difficulties here, but you can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, you all are looking great, and sorry for the delay there or any inconvenience to everybody. Mayor Grossman, thank you for the invitation this evening and all the members of council. We appreciate it very much. Mason is one of the most important parts of our district, as you know, and the mayor and I have gone.
Aw, man. Well, I think what he was going to say is we went on a few field trips to area businesses, and Congressman Shabbat was on a mission to find out how things were going with the PPP and CARES Act and what the experience is like as his committee was working on developing a second round. Oh, I see his hand.
Yeah, here we.
Here you are.
Can you hear me again?
We we lost you at the mayor and I, and that's it. So why don't you start from there?
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we won't lose each other again. Again, I apologize for all the all the things that have been messed up here this evening. We'll take responsibility on our end. The mayor and I had an opportunity to go around to a number of places from Rhine Stall to Ladles of Mason, the Manor House, Sonder Brewery, all of whom got PPP loans, as well as then going to Kings Island and some other places. But I happen to be the ranking member of the House Small Business Committee, former chair, have a very good working relationship with my Democratic chairman, Nidia Velazquez, from New York. And so she and I were instrumental in passing and actually crafting the PPP program, the Paycheck Protection Program, which was part of the CARES Act, which had funding, of course, for hospitals and frontline workers and our schools, state and local government, and a whole range of other things. But the PPP program actually benefited an awful lot of small businesses in our district. I'm pleased to say of the 16 congressional districts in Ohio, our district, the first district, got the most money, almost $3 billion. We had more small businesses that got loans, 17,600 plus. But most importantly, more jobs were saved in our district, almost a quarter of a million, 256,000 jobs were saved. And obviously, it wasn't just those businesses and those workers, but the families that they supported. So what what I've been trying to do in the, over the last month and a half or so, is to get a second round of PPP loans in the stimulus bill. And it would, that would be eligible for any small business that didn't get one in the first round, or a business that did get one, but that can prove that they've had economic hardship. How do you define that? Well, it would be a loss of revenues from the previous, from the quarter in the previous year of 25%. So loss of revenues of 25%. Also, the number of employees dropped down to 300 employees from originally it was 500. So those are a couple of changes. We're also trying to simplify the forgiveness process, and and we're making a lot of progress on that. We had hoped to get this done about a month ago. It's looking less and less likely that that's going to happen until after the election, probably in a lame duck session. So it may be a few weeks before we actually accomplish that. But I think I think we will be able to do that because a lot of small businesses, and there are an awful lot of small businesses, obviously, in Mason, who really need the assistance to get to the other side. We had literally, the economy was under such strain that a lot of these businesses never would have reopened, but for the PPP program. So we want to make sure as many folks in Mason as possible can get access to those loans. You can obviously either contact me or my office, we can help you. The loans will be made through the private sector. You know, they're not made directly by the SBA, Small Business Administration. They're made through one of the local banks or or credit unions, for example. So maybe at this point, I'll stop talking and be happy to answer any questions that any of the council members or the the mayor might have about this.
Vice Mayor?
Congressman Shabbat, thank you for your leadership on the PPP issues. I wonder if you could just to tell us for a moment what the purpose of the PPP program was all about and and what, how that program came together?
Sure. Well, about half the people who work in America work for a small business by definition. That means a company with 500 or fewer employees. And when COVID hit and the government shut down these businesses so that we could flatten the curve to to make sure that the hospitals and our healthcare system didn't become, you know, exhausted from so many people having the disease. That was the goal of this. When we shut down the small businesses, they needed revenue in order to survive. And the fear was that a lot of these businesses would not reopen. And so the purpose of the PPP program with these small businesses all across the country and nonprofits. So we made, you know, charities and nonprofits also eligible for this to make sure that they were able to survive and get through this. Now, none of us really knew at the beginning, this was back in February that we passed this, back in February, we didn't know how long this was going to last. And the experts then were saying maybe eight weeks, two months. Well, obviously, that was way too short. But the period of time for forgiveness in distributing that money to their employees was eight weeks. Well, that turned out to be much too small, so we went back in and made a change. We passed the PPP Enhancement Act and then the PPP Flexibility Act, which changed that eight weeks to 24 weeks. And and so that's, you know, that that happened. And oops, I think we just lost, I lost you on the screen there. I don't know if you lost me or not. But but that was the purpose of it, to give small businesses and those nonprofits the chance to survive this pandemic. And most have come through, you know, very well. Not everyone's going to reopen, even with the PPP funding, but we're hoping as many as possible because so many people work for a small business in this country.
If I could follow up, I think I heard you say that over 200,000 jobs in the first district were preserved and 15,000 businesses in the first district received loans under this program. Any idea?
That's correct.
You you may not have, are able to drill down and tell us how how Mason was affected by that. Can you tell from those numbers how many Mason businesses participated in the program?
I'm sure it was, I would guess hundreds, although I don't have an exact number. I could have my staff and the small business staff go down and drill drill into it and find out. But we did, the mayor, Mayor Grossman and I visited a number of those who did. But as far as the exact number, we have to look that up to, you know, to figure it out.
Yes, so Congressman, I just wanted to say that, you know, we adopted our own small business relief programs on a local level, and we're able to provide over half a million dollar, $535,000 in forgivable loans to close to 100 businesses here. But but I remain concerned that there may have been some Mason businesses that didn't participate in that first round of PPP money. There was some initial confusion about whether. There was some initial confusion about whether they should wait on local money or whether they should apply for the PPP program funds that were coming out there in March and April. And I'm wondering your House resolution, if you could speak to that for a moment, where that's at, how that's coming together. I think it's House Resolution 8265 that you've introduced and how that might impact people that didn't get to participate in that first round of PPP loans. If you could speak to that for a moment.
Sure, yeah. I mean, people who did not get one in the first round would be eligible. And then people who did get one in the first round, who had a loss of revenues of 25% over the same quarter in the previous year, they would also be eligible. Now, some communities did set up their own PPP-like programs. I know Mason did that. I discussed that with Mayor Grossman. And then others did as well. Some of that was from other money, not PPP, but other money that was in the CARES Act that went out to state and local governments and gave them a lot of flexibility as to what they could do with that additional funding. Some used their own resources that they had in a reserve or other accounts. So there was a mixture depending on the community and how much money they had available to them. But I would commend communities like Mason, who not only did get funds in businesses that relied upon the PPP funding, but also set up their own funding. Hamilton County did that too. And, you know, in our congressional district, it's all of Warren County, including obviously Mason. And then most of Hamilton County and most of the city of Cincinnati. And that's what Hamilton County did as well.
Very good. Thanks for the leadership. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Councilmember Nelson?
Congressman, thank you for joining us today. I appreciate your time. And I also appreciate your support for the CARES Funding Act. I just have a couple of questions. I know state and local governments are kind of on edge. We, you know, received, Mason at least, received two rounds of funding from the CARES Act. And the first round, we have to have encumbered by November 20th. And the second round has to be encumbered by December 30th. Currently, you know, we, cities don't see the impact right now. We're going to see it a year from now when taxes are due and we're not collecting as much revenue. So we might have budget shortfalls as well as other municipalities. And my question is, I know in this, the stimulus funding that's going on right now at the federal level, we're kind of waiting to hear if it's going to, if they're going to have more flexibility with how the funds can be used, you know, at the municipality level, as well as if there's going to be any use of the funds for budget stabilization, which is really important. And also, if, you know, what what does it look like to get the, I know they were working on possibly extending the date for the encumbrment of the funds, which those are two really important issues because it's great that we got this money, but we might not necessarily have to, you know, encumber it and use it all today. We might need it, you know, in four months from now. And we've already had to give it back because it wasn't encumbered. So what is the probability, do you think, of, you know, those actions being taken? And hopefully, you can support those actions when they come up.
Yeah, I certainly do support them. I'm for as much flexibility for the local governmental entities to use those monies, however makes sense, in that particular community. So I'm for that. As far as how likely is it to happen? All of that's up in the air. And thus far, we haven't been able to come to a resolution of this. And some of it has been probably because the election's coming up. And there's, you know, I know it's shocking to think that there'd be politics in Washington. But that has kind of, it's made it tougher for the House, which is Democratic now, and the Senate, which is Republican, to come to agreement. But I'm definitely for the flexibility. And, you know, after a few weeks, I think we'll know better as to how that, which direction we're going to go.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll ask you one of my human questions. I always have a human question. What was it like? You've been around all over your district, including businesses in Warren County and certainly in Mason and Deerfield. And I know what it was like for me to be able to, you know, be there while you were interviewing different business owners. What did you learn from all of those visits with these local businesses? What are some things?
Well, just how, you know, how plugged in these businesses are to the community and how much they care for their employees. You know, you oftentimes think that, you hear that there's a big difference between how the owner looks at it and their employees and that they don't necessarily care that much about their employees. They do. These, the most important element in a business are those people that work for them. And they do care. There may be exceptions here and there, but in general, those small businesses want the best for their employees. And, you know, and they wanted to do virtually anything within the law to be able to stay in business, to try to support their employees and their families. And that was heartening to see that. I didn't expect otherwise, but it was great to see that that's true.
Yeah, I saw that too. And most of the companies that we interviewed that I was at, things went fairly well. And I recall one of the owners at Ladles, it's a franchise. So his family is, has ownership over multiple locations in multiple states. And he made sure that every employee had his assistance in getting unemployment when they were shut down and took all that time. He was a millennial, by the way. I was really jealous about his skills and problem solving ability. And he said Ohio had one of the easier systems. But I was just, I was amazed that he spent that much time. And we felt the heaviness of each employer that we visited, the heaviness they felt for their families that worked for them. And Kings Island didn't qualify because their parent company has over 500 employees. But Mike Koontz, the general director there, told us a lot about how their company adapted, restructured, and is planning for the future. And that was really heartening to see how deeply he was affected and how difficult it has been for them to persevere. I don't know if you have any other things to share along that line?
Yeah, well, I guess one more thing I'd share, Mayor, is that, you know, these people, a lot of these people, this has been their dream, this small business. And they put everything they have into it. And to have something completely outside their control, COVID-19 be such a threat to their life savings and their life's dream, it was important that we actually did step in to help them. And that'll actually help the whole country. So it's something that we all, as Americans, you know, did that I think we can be proud of. And, you know, it was, this whole process has been a very encouraging thing because we have a lot more in common than we have in differences. You don't necessarily see that at election time when there's, you know, a lot of finger pointing and name calling and all that stuff. But in general, this is a great country, who people are patriotic. They care about their employees. The employees care about the business they work for. And we're all in this together. That's something I think we should always keep in mind.
Well, thank you so much for visiting us today and spending so much time with us. As always, you're the consummate diplomat, always has a kind word, and is known for his style in Washington, working with both sides of the aisle and encouraging people behind the scenes to reach compromises. So we really appreciate your service. And if no one else on council has anything to say, oh, we do. So this is Councilmember Chance. He has a question for you.
Yeah, real quick, hey, thank you for joining us. But I think there was a really good distinction that you made there was the public-private partnerships with. And I think where there was, I'm a small business owner myself. And I think where there was a big fallout of people not understanding on what to do is they are, you know, working with their banking institution. And I think making that a much clearer message on this second round would be extremely helpful for these small businesses. Everybody is going to have some sort of banking relationship. Not everybody might have a personal banker, but we know there's designated folks inside each institution. And I think it would just be very helpful if it was extremely clear on that you're not, they're not going to the government, right? They are going to sit down with a banking institution to help see them through this process. So I think making that message much clearer would be extremely helpful.
Yeah, that's a great point, Chance. And we by design let the private sector do this because had we tried to do this, have the government doing it, we never could have done it. And if we did, we'd have screwed it all up. So it's a good thing we let the private.
I understand that, yeah.
So, but I hear what you're saying, and I totally agree with you.
Well, thanks again for joining us.
Thank you, thank you. It's great to be with you all. Thank you. God bless Mason.
Oh, thank you. We have one more question for you, if that's okay. This is Councilmember TJ Hunter Law.
Hey TJ, how you doing?
Congressman, how are you? No, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for all your time, your leadership. That I know even tonight, your schedule was crazy. And we appreciate you being able to spend time to help clarify what all you did and answer these questions tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you TJ. It's great to be with everybody. And I hope you all have a great meeting from here on. Sorry about the technical difficulties at the beginning. And if we can be of any help, you know, just call us anytime. As you know, we've got an office relatively close by in Lebanon, right down the street from the Golden Lamb. So if we can be of any help anytime, let us know.
Thank you, Congressman. All right, well, have a nice night.
Thank you, Mayor Gross.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Later, bye bye.
All right. Well, that was, that worked out. It was a little tricky at first, a little awkward. Sorry about that. But you know what? That is, we're all learning, right? So we are now ready to get to the business portion of our meeting. Item nine on the agenda, Resolution 2020-14. I need a motion to read by title only, please. So moved. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Adopting the Warren County Hazard Mitigation Five-Year Plan Update.
Okay, Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a couple, two or three, actually, housekeeping type of items on here. The first resolution, 202014, is working with Warren County Emergency Management Agency. We have a strong 30-year history of working collaboratively with them on emergency management planning activities. They are required to routinely update, was called the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And we have worked with them on that. They revise it every five years. As part of that process, the city also assesses our own assets, vulnerabilities as part of that hazard mitigation process. And we learned a couple of things that we do really well here and a few things that we should improve upon as far as our planning process. So along with recognizing the Warren County Hazard Mitigation Five-Year Plan, anticipate here in the next several months, a couple of updates we'd like to make to the city's own emergency operation plans and our continuity of operations plan. Really want to, and I'll do that again on the next ordinance, but acknowledge the city's instant command process. We've never had such an extended instant command situation as we've gone through recently. We have learned a lot of lessons there, a lot of things that we have prepared for that have come out very well. And a couple of things here that we think we can improve upon in the future. With that, Resolution 202014 is the city's expression of support and the updates that Warren County is making to the Hazard Mitigation Plan is recommended.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? I would just add that we're proud of the job our city staff has done with incident command. And throughout this emergency situation, you've really done well in very difficult circumstances. So we're glad about that. Anyone else? Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. Okay. Item 10 goes back to our topic we were just discussing, Resolution 2020-15. I need a motion to read by title only. Second, all in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Jeff?
Finding that small business programs and public safety incident command personnel are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 health emergency and declaring an emergency.
Eric?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I was a little distracted as the discussion on CARES Act funding was occurring. So I don't want to repeat some of that. I only heard a bit. But what Resolution 202015 does, it's another step. And I give a lot of credit again to instant command, as well prepared as we are. Actually, one of the, in any instant command process, one of the, I think unrecognized or goes under the radar is the financial component of it. Both the advance work to make sure that things are in place, but also the documentation. And we have a strong history of this because we've treated events such as Red Rhythm Boom as if they were instant command in terms of documentation. So we were well-practiced, well-rehearsed in this latest incident. And it pays off in situations when there is reimbursement available. And that's what the CARES Act and this resolution is the second step. Mason was at the forefront back in July when you adopted Resolution 2025, affirming funds that could be reimbursed for CARES. And then with this resolution, we're asking council to acknowledge several of the efforts that staff have made, and some of these are itemized. I would draw attention to the instant command process itself, our campus safety effort that we're able to quickly redirect to things such as prepping for COVID-19 issues, the medic staffing and the pandemic daycare that we were able to offer through the community center. This resolution formalizes, acknowledges, and helps us establish other reimbursements that are now available through the CARES Act funding. The detail and the paperwork that goes into that was integrated into our instant command from the very beginning. Resolution 202015 is recommended.
We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. All in favor? Oh, wait, yeah, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt? Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb? Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Item 11 is ordinance 2020-97. We need a motion to read by title only, please. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Approval of the final plats for Crooked Tree Preserve, Phases 3D and 3E.
Right, and this one belongs to Kurt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Sections 3D and 3E are both sections of the Crooked Tree Preserve subdivision. At the left side of this page shows kind of a blown-up view of where both of those sections are. Bethany Road is at the south here. And this is Sentinel Oak Drive as it comes up through. So Section 3D is kind of in the middle of the subdivision and 3E is towards Bethany Road. One thing I'll bring to your attention is 3E includes a, that's where the existing water tower is on Bethany Road. So it's located about right over here where the, my cursor is, or actually, it's shown here with a red circle. That's where our existing water tower is. There's an existing easement that's kind of hard to see, but runs right up through here and goes over for what was our crew. And now Waterworks uses that easement to access the water tower. With this Section 3E, they'll now be able to access that off of this new cul-de-sac. And so part of the ordinance includes in a separate instrument, vacation of this easement through this lot and these other lots that it attaches to. So just want to point that out. Section 3D is 24 additional single-family lots. 3E is 13 additional single-family lots. And this, these plats will dedicate the easements needed for all the utilities, storm, sewer, water, as well as the roads. Planning Commission recommended approval of both final plats. Contention on submission of the performance bond and subdividers contract at the October 6th meeting. And with that, ordinance 2020-97 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor? Yes. Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item 12 is really exciting. Ordinance 2020-98. This is one of Eric Hansen's favorite things to talk about. We need a motion to read by title only, please. So moved. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jennifer? I mean, not Jennifer, Jeff. Jennifer's next. Sorry, Eric, you don't get to talk about it this time.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Cargill Inc. for the purchase of approximately 5,500 tons of highway rock salt at $47.22. at $47.22 per ton.
Jennifer, thank you.
First of all, you're right. Eric does like to talk about this and typically he talks about it in June when he can make fun of it. But with COVID, we're a bit delayed on this and trying to get things back on track here. So, the city historically has purchased in two different cooperative purchasing programs for the city's rock salt. One is through the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government Program and the other, better, this one you have to hold real close. The other one is through the Warren County Engineers Office. We again participated in both those programs. The low bidder on both those programs is Cargill, which is similar to last year. If you remember last year, the city was a little concerned over competitive bids and having enough salt on hand if there was just one supplier. The same is true for this year. Bids last year were around $80. What we saw this year under the program, one program, Cargill bid a bid of around $80. The other one that came in much lower, which is around $47. The only basis for that we can figure out is timing of when the bids went out, which is highly unusual. But, again, this year instead of solely relying on Cargill as part of that and authorizing a contract just with Cargill, we're asking council to approve additional legislation that would allow us to buy rock salt through another provider should the need arise. We use about 5,500 of rock salt, or our salt barn holds about 55 tons of rock salt. It's currently full, which is the good news. But with that, we're asking for two pieces of legislation tonight. One for a contract with Cargill and the second to be named with whatever vendor we can find if the need should arise. We don't expect to spend more than $260,000 on any one of those contracts. That's whether permitted. With that, ordinance 2020-98 and 2020-99 are recommended for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Okay, yes?
I could just add one thing since you queued it up for me. And I do like talking about rock salt. Primarily because the salt dome that we built some years ago, I think dollar for dollar was one of the smartest things the city has done. When you look at how salt is a commodity and the price ranges it goes. And I think what you may see, and I hate to leave a teaser, but in the budget proposals for next year, I think we may be able to see our way to purchase or to build a second salt dome. And it's these type of price fluctuations that you see between last year and this year. I think it becomes very wise to be in a better position. We've been in a great position. We can improve ourselves in how we essentially play the market by buying when it's low and having it for a rainy or snowy day, so to speak. So, one of the smartest purchases we made and it's times like this when it pays off.
Sounds like a well-seasoned idea.
If I may, I would like to take credit. I was on council at that time when we went ahead and went ahead with the larger salt storage facility. And Eric's right, you know, if you got the ability to store it, you could buy it when it's low. It's there. It doesn't expire. I think our workers did an excellent job with it as far as getting the streets. I've heard many compliments. But we've got a new winter coming up. We'll see how that goes. Last year wasn't too bad, as I recall. Not bad at all, but, and also I did see the note about the possibility of an additional storage space and we'll get into that, I guess, in budget negotiations. I shouldn't say negotiations, budget discussion. How's that sound?
I thought Mr. Hansen was going to touch on incident command. I'm kind of disappointed because this is one of the first programs we utilized incident command throughout the city for. And that was kind of the start, which led us to then Red Rhythm and Boom and where we are this evening with some legislation for it.
Wow, that's a great point. You have much seasoned wisdom. Little joke there, but no, that's true. Off the top of your head, how much does it cost to build a salt dome?
About $200,000 last time. I'd estimate maybe $250,000, $300,000 this time.
Okay.
Pays for itself rapidly. Salt is expensive when you consider how much we can go through on a, you know, winter. It's more expensive than the fuel, certainly more expensive than the manpower.
Alright, any other council discussion? Alright, this was kind of a nerd alert, but it's really important stuff, right? Alright, too bad we don't have our high school kids. Man, I miss those kids. Okay, alright, we need to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Member Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Item 13, ordinance 2020-99. I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an alternate contract for the purchase of highway rock salt in an amount not to exceed $250,000.
We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Item 14 is ordinance 2020-100. We need a motion to read by title only. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pensura LLC for the purchase of playground equipment and associated materials for Pine Hill Park in the total amount of $275,000.
Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. This is the beginning of an exciting new project. Pine Hill Park Playground has been in existence since 2003 when it was, or actually it predates 2003. It was donated by Amold Company and then in 2003, we've replaced it and that's almost 17 years old. That's how old that playground is. Along with the splash pad that's next to it. Over the past several, oh, for a number of years, the splash pad, we have been having all kinds of repair issues with it. It is not chlorinated water. So, this past summer with the COVID, we could not open the splash pad. The playground has deteriorated. We have been looking at making repairs out there. We don't even know if we can get parts. The estimated for, the estimated cost for repairs is roughly $79,000, but that's if we can get parts. It's just such an antiquated playground structure. So, the 2020 budget did include $200,000 for replacement of that, for the beginning of the replacement of that playground. The $200,000 would roughly, what we looked at is estimated cost for replacing the playground of the similar size. And if you look at the memo that was included in your packets, in 2003, that playground cost $159,000. So, $200,000 would not get us a playground of that size out there. So, we're asking for council to increase that to $275,000 to basically replace similar-sized playground out there. And we also would like to add some additional features to that. And the features we'd like to add would be consistent with some of the features that we're seeing at the new Makino Park Common Ground Playground. I think that's the brand now for the city and how we move forward at all of our playgrounds. Not that we would have all the structures that Common Ground have, but if we can incorporate some of those structures or maybe some different structures at our playgrounds, I think that really just sets the tone for the city being an all-inclusive community for everybody to come out and enjoy our playground. So, again, $275,000 would, is an increase over the 2020 budget. But it will, and it is only for the structure. That would allow us to begin moving forward with this project. Next year, we would come back to council for legislation for turf and potential fencing around the playground, which is one of the features that with the opening of the special of Makino Park, one of the things the families out there have told us has been most significant is the fencing around the playground. They don't have to worry about their children. They're bringing them to a safe location. And so, we'd like to start incorporating that at some of our other playgrounds as well. With that, we're asking for ordinance 2020-100 to be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. So moved. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt? So moved. Any council discussion? We'll miss the dinosaur park, but this is exciting news. My kids called it the dinosaur park. And I think the moms and dads taking their kids to the park are going to love the fence when that all comes about. Alright, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes. Item 16 is ordinance 2020-101. We need a motion to read by title only. So moved. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Stauffer Site Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $217,042 for the Church Street Storm Sewer Improvements Project.
Okay, Jennifer?
I'll take the fun.
Wait, I'm sorry. Kurt, excuse me. Oh, I think I got off on my notes. Sorry, sorry. Kurt, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you. This is at the west end of Church Street, so it's near Oak Street and Church Street. In that intersection is where the project is located. That area generally has just overland drainage. There's no catch basin or storm sewer system. And so, that's what this project would do is add catch basins in the area outside of the pavement, in the grass area that will keep the water from draining down driveways into garages as it currently runs today. Along with the project, Waterworks has requested some water main to be replaced. And so, $96,000 of this project will be reimbursed by Waterworks and that's the water main work that's included. Stauffer was the low bidder on the project and they've done other stormwater projects for us in the past with good success. The 2020 budget included $300,000 for this project. And we were very happy with the bids, especially during the pandemic. So, if approved, they would start potentially late this year or early next year with the project depending on the timing of their crews and their availability. And with that, ordinance 2020-101 authorizes the contract with Stauffer and is recommended for adoption. And I'll answer any questions that you have.
We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
I have, Mayor.
Yes.
So, gosh, I think since 2016, when I first got on council, I've been trying to get some improvements down Frank Street and Miller Street and Oak Street. They have severe flooding down there. And I know years ago, I talked to some of the homeowners years ago, one of the homeowners said, well, they came and said, yeah, you know, we don't have proper drainage and we'll put you on a list to get it fixed. And that was like 20 years ago. And I've inquired about it during my time on council and I keep hearing, oh, they're on the list, they're on the list, but they're so far down, they keep getting pushed down the list. Since we are going through and doing these improvements right in that area, I would like to add, and you probably aren't going to have to come back next council with another ordinance, but I would like to add, you know, the fix to Frank Street and Miller Street there, put proper drainage in that section as well, since we're doing the Oak Street and Church Street area. It's just long overdue. It's been on the list forever. It would just be good to kind of pull that into that project. So, do I need to make a motion to have that done? I know you're going to have to get quotes on it, so I know we can't really incorporate it into this ordinance and vote on it tonight, but it would be nice to possibly have at the next council meeting an ordinance to be able to do this as well.
I think we would need some design work to be done in that area first. I don't believe we have design for that section. It's really a different watershed and doesn't drain down towards this area. I know it's in the same similar area, but it's a different watershed. So, it wouldn't be as easy as just getting an additional quote. So, for this project, we had, we coordinated with the gas company, water company, all the utilities. And we would need to do the same thing in that area. We did do a couple of years ago, some improvements to the ditch along Frank Street and Burke back there that helped significantly with some of the drainage issues that the residents had.
Yeah, I actually just, I drive down there occasionally just to check it out and one of the homeowners was outside when I was driving by and I talked to him. This was only like a month or two ago. And he said that they're still having those issues, the flooding issues. So, maybe we can look at this and see if it makes sense to get quotes and incorporate it in somehow. I understand we can't do it right now with this ordinance. I get that. But it would be nice to, you know, finally get that fixed for them on that end.
Is that something we could delegate tonight to the Public Services Committee? Or do you think a committee meeting is necessary? Not necessary?
I think it may be helpful for Public Services to look at because it's not, it will involve design. It will involve property acquisition or there's lack of room and where the drainage on private property. So, I think it could be, it may feel simple, but even this took some years.
Okay. It was difficult to hear you. What was the first thing that you said about the committee?
I think it would be helpful for a committee to look at because I think it's not going to be simply a change order presented to council. There's going to be some some decision, some direction to how you logistically approach it.
Great, okay.
Both design work as well as acquisition of easements or property in the area.
Okay, so Councilmember Chance, that's your baby.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
I'll get with my other committee members and with Eric and see what we can come up with.
Can I, so in our, I believe it was the Finance Committee meeting when we were on Finance Committee. We had talked about this and we talked about fixing, there was a lady that had contacted me a while ago in regards to flooding where the students stand. Is this this spot right here?
Yes.
Okay, so in that Finance Committee, we had talked about fixing this at the same time. And we, the Finance Committee agreed that that would be a great idea. So, what happened to it? Why isn't it part of this project? Do you remember that?
I remember definitely including that in the discussion, but I don't know exactly where we landed on if we're going to do it. But I do remember the biggest part that we were trying to solve for was on Church Street to where there's, when students were standing out there. I remember her coming to council. And actually, I live right there, so I can see it from my front yard where they're standing in puddles. So, I'm happy to see that we are getting this thing done. But, to Councilmember Nelson's, I will go those back streets from my house and if it has rained, it is pretty bad. So, with that being said, I'd be more than willing to call a Public Service Committee meeting for us to start getting into some of those logistics discussions and see what we could do to maybe get something on prior to look at it, put it on the budget for '21.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect time of year to start working on that. Anything else on this, Councilmember Hunter Law, I'm sorry.
Thank you Mayor. Kurt, so I know that on that west side of Church Street there, I thought there was at least, maybe it was just a, I don't know if it was one resident or a few that had talked about wanting to see what we have on East Church Street with the widened road and the sidewalk. So, I think you need a consensus of all the, all those homeowners to agree. And I don't think we have that right now. The work that we're going to do now, will we have to redo that if that were to ever someday get widened or is this going to tie in? I'm going to make sure we're not paying to do it twice. Is it separate?
Yeah, we had the same concern. And so, the design of this was set up for if those future improvements are done and we, you know, do some of the curb and sidewalk additions in that area that these catch basins would tie in and be in the right location. So, as well as the water main, fire hydrant, things like that, were all considered, right?
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Item 16, ordinance 2020-102. We need a motion to read by title only, please. All in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
Declaring certain city equipment and property as surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said equipment and property.
And Eric's going to take this one?
Yes.
Okay.
This is another favorite one because I always say the pun, this is literally a housekeeping ordinance. This is literally a housekeeping ordinance.
Yep.
City gathers um ages out surplus equipment or equipment that no longer serves a public purpose, and there is a process for how that can be disposed of via auction. And the this step of it is authorizing a property to be declared surplus by the city. Uh we go through this periodically. This includes both equipment that the city has purchased and exhausted its useful life of, but can also include property that has been acquired or forfeited um through through police activity. Was before you, the ordinance two thousand twenty one oh two is the next iteration of this pro- process, declaring property surplus so that we can then proceed to disposing of it. It is recommended for adoption.
We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Bradburn? Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb? Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. Item seventeen is committee reports. We're gonna start with Board of Veterans Affairs, followed by downtown. We're gonna mix things up a little bit and move to Public Services, and then we'll end with Employee Relations. Whenever you're ready.
Uh we had a Veteran Services, Board Veterans Affairs uh meeting, lots of exciting things coming up for the month of November. And I I thought I had my list, and I apologize, I don't. So we'll uh, but I've got a couple of things. So uh obviously, we finalized the banner program, at least for this year. I know we're gonna come out with a different round. Um I think we had over a hundred applicants and banners that will be out. So I'm sorry? A little bit less than a hundred, at forty-six, at forty-six banners. Uh but those, look for those, they're gonna go out, they're gonna be around town um hanging up and honoring the local veterans. Here, we have uh throughout the month of November, a lot of um items for veterans, so keep an eye out for those. One uh that you can take advantage of will be out here on Monday, November ninth and November tenth in front of the community center. It'll be a uh, it's a uh like an RV. But if you have a DD two fourteen as a veteran, you can come in, you can get that uh recorded and uh get an official uh state issued veteran's ID card uh that you can use um when needed. So that will be uh hanging out there. That's uh with uh the Warren County Recorder. Uh look for Center Point Magazine, I'll just kinda show this up, but the big news obviously is that we will be honored as a uh Purple Heart City to recognize as Purple Heart recipients in the city of Mason, and we have a nice um cover page that will be coming out, uh recognizing one of those on Center Point, so look for that. And then November ninth at six PM will be the ceremony here uh in the city building for that um little ceremony. So.
Thank you. All right, downtown.
Hi, mayor, that's me. Uh so the downtown committee did meet um on ten twenty-three. We meet at eight AM. We're trying to meet once a month there. Uh we did get an update from uh city staff about the McBride Dale Clarion is uh, they've got the results from the steering committee of of what their recommendations were, and uh we're waiting to hear back from McBride Dale. I don't think anything's really moved on that for thirty to sixty days out from them handing that back to the steering committee uh before it goes any further. Uh some of the other topics that did come up while we discussed uh a lot of uh East Main issues of downtown, uh parking and even lighting. And uh, let's see, we discussed um, I think as a committee, I think we were all in consensus about liking to see someday in the future us uh being able to work with the underground utilities. Right now, it's only on, I think, the the one section of Main Street, and we'd like to be able to extend that from Tyler'sville all the way to to the other end of East Main. I don't think that's quite heritage, it's right in there. And uh we'd like to at least um get the ball rolling on seeing what the cost for that and get that some, push that into action somehow just to for, because we all agree that was something we'd like to be able to at least get costs on and see where that's at. And then um, let's see, uh I think the other thing that was mentioned was uh that's about impossible to fix, I think, so maybe I shouldn't even bring it up, but across from St. Chisana, the sidewalk there is something that was brought up and how it's very difficult to fix the issue, though there's no sidewalk on that side of the road running through there. Uh Eric would have to re-comment on what those issues were, but um those are the kind of things we discussed as the committee for downtown. But until we uh uh get anything back from uh McDale, or McBride Dale, that um that's uh, that's gonna put us around Christmas time, and then it'll go to the steering committee, and then after that, then it'll come back to our committee. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Public Services?
Sure, yeah, to dovetail off what councilmember Hunter Law said, we we picked up the ball on looking at what east side of Main Street would look like. Although it's, it wasn't uh exactly what we wanted to hear in regards to burying utilities and and looking um at what that might look like. We left there um and assistant manager Heft is is picking up the ball on looking at more of some aesthetic things right now, because um there is uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of complications from the east side to the west side in regards to understanding burying the utilities and the easements and the type of um sidewalk and so that, but we are looking into it, and I think we're gonna probably call another meeting um, you know, before the end of the year or two, uh see what we came up with and try to understand what is a path forward there, because I think um driving through Main Street, you can see a um a a big difference between um what the west side of Main Street or what Mason Montgomery and the east side looks like. So it is our, it is our um, it's our hope and that we can figure out something to do there. So so stay tuned there. We also brought up something that um is going to make a lot of people happy, that we're gonna, you know, continue and get the bridge on um basically King's Mills Road, seven forty-one exit, and we're gonna look at that, um looking to get renderings from Kurt. He's been working with ODOT on what that looks like on um how, what's the path moving forward of getting um traffic and and all of those studies, because this was kind of right in the midst of when COVID hit, and we weren't quite prepared um, you know, for everything else that we'd be dealing with. So I'm looking forward to uh getting that taken care of, and I know my lovely bride is looking forward to getting that taken care of, and today's her birthday. So I might be able to like bring her home a very good birthday present and say, hey, look, we are getting something done on the bridge. So so that is, so happy birthday, Beth. Um yeah, so that's Public Services, and again, we will uh, and I am uh more than willing to um call that meeting with uh to discuss what we were earlier. So I'll do that and go from there.
Thank you. Employee Relations?
Hi, we met last week, and I would like to um add ordinance twenty twenty one oh three, ordinance twenty twenty one oh four, and ordinance twenty twenty one oh five to the agenda tonight. And what these are, we, every year, we talk about authorizing um cost of living increases as well as merit increases uh to the employees of the city of Mason, and it's really important to do it at this time of year because uh the budget, they start working on the budget. And so the budget, I think, comes out in November. Um so this is just to get all this information on the budget. So if um we could put those ordinances, um we can vote on those today, that would be great.
Okay, is there such a motion to add ordinances one oh twenty twenty dash one oh three, one oh four, and one oh five to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. So we have that ready to go. Ordinance twenty twenty dash one zero three, we need a motion to read that by title only, please.
So moved.
All in, all in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
Establishing the Salary Administration Plan, Providing For Consideration Of Increases In Compensation On An Annual Basis And Granting A Cost Of Living Increase.
Jennifer? Will you be discussing any of this with us? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
All right, let's, any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Member Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
All right, this should bring us to item nineteen on the agenda. Ordinance twenty twenty dash one zero four, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Repealing ordinance twenty nineteen dash one thirty-eight of the city of Mason, Ohio, and establishing hiring compensation ranges for city of Mason employment positions.
Okay, we need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash one zero five, I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Modifying the contract for legal services with Wood and Lamping LLP to provide for updated compensation.
Hey, we need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any council discussion? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, we need a motion to adopt. Thanks. Okay, in, any council discussion now? Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I would also like to make a motion. So we usually give our city manager a bonus uh in March, and um this year, we did not do it because of COVID, and he has put in um a lot of hours, many more than he usually does, and has having to deal with a lot of different issues. And we um are very thankful for his work. Our city is as great as it is because of the work that he does and our um employees do, and I feel it is appropriate, and so does the um Employee Relations Committee feel it's appropriate to um grant him a bonus of twelve thousand dollars. This is in line with um other cities and other areas, and it is lower than last year's amount just because of the economy.
Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Item twenty-one is old and new business. Yes.
I could share um someone made a call for civility that was put out by a mayor of a local city here in Ohio, and uh I'll just read it to you as it came to me. She starts out with a quote, "I never considered a difference of opinion in politics, in religion, in philosophy, as cause for withdrawing from a friendship." Those were words that Thomas Jefferson penned in a letter to William Hamilton in April of eighteen hundred. Uh she says, "This is as true in twenty twenty as it was back in eighteen eighteen." She noted that a group of Democrats and Republicans jointly released an ad this week calling for civility and unity, and they said that they can, we can debate without degrading, we can disagree without hating, we can collaborate, collaborate no matter who wins. In a thirty-second ad, they made a statement that many across our country and around the world are wanting to hear, and that statement is that civility is not dead. She challenged us to consider Jefferson's letter to William Hamilton in the ad that was released this week. Maybe discuss with them, maybe discuss them with someone who has a different politics than you. Why, she asked? Well, because the best way to communicate is to listen first, realize that your viewpoint is not the only one. Respectful disagreement can be positive. It helps us grow as individuals and collectively as a community. When you listen, she asked, do you listen just to respond, or do you listen to learn? When was the last time you sought out the reasons someone holds a different view than yours, and do you really hear them? How often do you pause and test your own thought processes? Have you recently ruined a relationship because of a different perspective? Is it worth that cost? Think of all the ways that we communicate. Before writing something, do you consider how you would say it in person? Before you hit the share button on social media, do you validate the content against at least two other credible sources? The ad released, and the words of Thomas Jess, or the ad released this week, uh reiterated the words of Thomas Jefferson nearly two hundred years ago. "Let us be quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to anger." And that was written by Christine Mern, who's the mayor of the city of Finley here in Mason, and I would just encourage us as a council to take our words to heart, and let us be quick to hear, slow to speak, slow to anger, and let us move forward with civility and unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? A councilmember Brad?
New business, is it any old business? I got a new, new business?
Well?
I don't, I, I.
I don't think it matters.
It says old and new, I feel we're going in that order on the agenda.
And or new today.
I received a uh a phone call today uh from local business, it's addressed to Mason City Council. I'd like to read it. Mason City Council, on behalf of our entire Quatman team, we would like to thank the Mason City Council and the city Mason Business Development Department for initiating the Yipti gift program. Our restaurant was fortunate to have been on the receiving end of many of the gift cards, and it was a much-needed and welcome boost to our business. It was a win-win for the residents and businesses of Mason, and we were thankful for the council and the residents for their support during these unprecedented, unprecedented, I'm saying that wrong, president times, I got it wrong, but we'll go on. In addition to the gift cards, we are appreciative of the quick loan approval to assist with our decreased cash flow when we were carry out only. Due to Mason's support, we were able to stay open and keep all our employees. We love being part of the city of Mason and look forward to the many parades, uh concerts, festivals, and other events that make Mason such a wonderful city to work, live, and visit. Again, thank you for all you do to to support the businesses and residents of Mason. We appreciate, we appreciate all you do. I gotta do. Missing that word, I can't read the what's there. Do. Okay, it's kind of, they made it one word, they made it one word for us, okay. And and we hope you all stay safe and healthy in these trying times. Sincerely, Matt and Angie Inman, Quatman Cafe.
Right.
Oh, that is so special.
Matt indicated he would be here, but he said he was going to be tied up doing the restaurant business, and he asked me to read it, and I said I would. That's it.
Great.
Well, thank you for that, that is so special to hear. It really is. We love Quatmans, my kids love Quatmans. Anyone else have old or new business?
Mayor, I do.
Brad Nelson?
So I'll be watching the generally, General Assembly as it reconvenes in the lame duck session. Senate Bill 365 would extend the, extend the authorization for members of the public body to conduct meetings or hearings via electronic technology, which is Zoom, instead of in-person, as a way to minimize the exposure to the coronavirus. Currently, the authorization to conduct these meetings virtually will expire on December 1st. And so we're hopeful that we'll have the ability in case someone here thinks they have Corona, that they can still participate and come in through Zoom. But that does not apply to, we have, we have the streaming live via Zoom, and that doesn't apply to that. We're going to continue with that regardless of this December 1st deadline. That's more for us. Good news for businesses, as the Ohio Bureau of Workmen's Compensation will be mailing dividend checks out to employers beginning this week. The dividend amount totals approximately $1.3 billion. The money is being given back to employee, employers in, in response to Governor DeWine's request in August that the Ohio BWC Board of Directors approve a second dividend to provide financial support to the public and private employers impacted by the ongoing pandemic. The checks will be mailed out through the end of October, so be looking for yours in the mail. And we have a number of bars and restaurants in Mason, so I thought it would be appropriate to report on House Bill 669. The governor signed House Bill 669, and that is legislation that enables delivery of sales of alcoholic beverages, expands the areas for alcohol consumption for permit holders, and extends the ability of patrons to purchase up to three alcoholic beverages to go at restaurants per meal. The bill is already effective. And the, the President of the Senate introduced Bill 374, which is legislation that will repeal the state's emergency order that preempts the ability of bars and restaurants to sell alcohol after 10:00 PM. The legislation currently has 22 bipartisan cosponsors, so that is all that I have.
So you're saying BWC is giving back premiums for, what's the length of time?
They actually do this every year, but this is a second dividend that should be coming out, 1.3 billion.
That's interesting.
Looking for a check?
They were probably hoping we wouldn't find out.
If you pay BWC premiums, you will most likely get a check.
I mean, I would encourage all business owners out there to, you know, definitely hold the state, you know, their feet to the fire on that, because I've never seen one back from BWC. I only seen them increase my premiums without me knowing. So that's encouraging to hear that they are going to be giving that back. So that's, thank you for sharing that. And I will be looking out for a check.
Wonder, do you know if there is an application process for that?
No, I mean, they do it now, so we always just, for the businesses that I deal with, we always just get it in the mail.
Just automatic.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, you know, okay. Wow. Anything else? Old and new? All right. Seeing there is none, let's move on to item 22, which is recognition of visitors. Do we have anyone in the electronic queue or in the audience? I see a hand up there, is that you, Mr. Looker? I think it might be, come on up. I know you know the drill. We're glad you're here.
John Looker, 111 East Main Street. I apologize for being late. I host a Zoom meeting for our class of 1966, the last Monday of each month. So I apologize for being late. And I'm not sure how much was covered under the Veterans Affairs Committee. But I did go out this morning and put all the banners in alphabetical order. There's 47 of them, and Matt told me that they would be placed, I think, the beginning of next week. So we should be up before Veterans Day. The other thing is, we're moving forward on the dedication of Purple Heart City. I think that's all in order now. I think we've got the agenda straightened around the way the Purple Heart Committee wants to do it. So I think we're ready to do that on November 9th. And I think that unless there's something else I haven't covered, Diana, I don't know if there is, what you covered in the Veterans Affairs. Nothing?
No, I, I think you, you did a much better job than I did.
Sorry about that. So again, all 47 will be up, probably the beginning of next week, they'll start putting them up. And I'm going to be going around and checking, we're going to do them in alphabetical order. I think they're going to start on Mason Montgomery here and go, go down that way and then go up Tyler'sville. But I'll be walking around so I can get back to people and let them know approximately where their banner will be. So that's all I had. Thank you for the recognition. I'm sorry I'm late again.
You were right on time, and congratulations. And we always need a reminder, so that was great to have that information twice. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the queue? Okay, come on up. State your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Counsel, my name is Mark Hackey, I reside at 3620 Dunlop Court. First off, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Hanson, I think lunch is on you. Seriously, I, I do want to compliment the staff, all the administration, Mason City Council. You guys are an amazing group of people who have done just absolutely stellar work over the last, as long as I've lived here, the 18 years I've lived here. So thank you to all of you for all the work you've done. Vice Mayor Gilb, that was a very interesting reading. It, it's definitely something for all of us to reflect on. I appreciate you bringing that up. It's a nice positive message that I, unfortunately, is going to lead into some negativity here, and I apologize for that, but I don't feel like I've got a lot of choice here. So with that, I just want to start by saying that I am really struggling to understand, Mayor, why you feel it's okay to attack the citizens and the businesses of Mason. Let's step away from your attack on the citizens. I'm sorry, let's, let's step away from your attack on the citizens and businesses who felt it was necessary to send a clear message to the four of you that we were not happy with your actions. I'm obviously referring to the false report you submitted to council on September 14th. We've already established that that was a clear attempt to shut down anyone who dares to oppose you. Instead, I want to talk about your response at the last council meeting when Mr. StegBauer was asking for some clarification on who authored the report you submitted to council on September 14th. His questions were perfectly reasonable since it's hard to keep up with your claims. You initially claimed you had help from several people. Then you claimed you wrote it yourself. Then you claimed you had some help, but that was just getting the petitions delivered. So when Mr. StegBauer was understandably confused and wanted clarification, you lashed out at him, as you often do, asking, "Is there any person you would like to imply who was helping me, sir?" You also added, "I assumed you were implying someone in my household, because that happens a lot here, and it shouldn't." Well, as we heard during one of the sessions of council that you presided over from your kitchen, we clearly heard a male voice in your, in the background telling you to take credit for it. So it would certainly seem reasonable for people to assume that your husband is helping you. I would like to remind each of you that are on council, I'm sorry, I would like to remind each of you that you are on council at the will of the voters, and your job is to perform those duties outlined within the city charter. I've read the charter, and I can't find anywhere where it states that you should attack the residents or small business when they don't agree with you and state so via any legal or constitutional action. Mr. Gilb, at the last council meeting, you and the mayor both made claims that the real message should have been the good that was done. The mayor even went so far as to say, and I quote, "We tried and tried and tried to get the word in edgewise." This claim is ridiculous. Your message was loud and clear. You, the four, were going to push your agenda at all costs so you could take credit for it. So here's how I see it. As has been said many times during these incredibly contentious meetings, this is nothing more than political posturing. Rather than do the right thing and work with all members of council to do what was right for the city, you chose to do everything you could to make this your program so you could, again, take credit for it. You could have come out much stronger had you simply worked together to modify the original proposal into something you all could get behind. You could have then added additional legislation, since, as you said, you wanted to do even more. This would have shown the small businesses of Mason that they mattered. Instead, it became crystal clear that your only interest was to use them for your own political gain. So now the colder weather, now that colder weather is upon us, and as we're seeing an alarming increase in the number of COVID cases, what are you going to do next to show the small businesses of Mason that you really do love them, as you have claimed in several of your closing arguments? I recently spoke to the President of the Hamilton Chamber and learned that they, along with the city of Hamilton, are working together to provide funds for outdoor heaters and other supplies to help ensure that their businesses can continue to take advantage of extended outdoor spaces so they can hopefully survive the winter. Two things you should take away from that statement. One, they're proactively trying to help their small businesses in Hamilton. And two, they're working with their chamber, not taking every opportunity to attack the chamber and make ridiculous accusations against them. And what is Mason doing? They're turning down requests from businesses who are desperately trying to do anything they can to keep their businesses alive. If you truly do care about these small businesses, why do your actions say the exact opposite? Could it possibly go back to a statement your husband made to a local business owner? This is referring to you, Mrs. Grossman. A statement your husband made to a local business owner when he said, "As long as I'm mayor, not another penny would be spent on downtown Mason. It's just a waste of money." Is this your opinion as well? Is that something you would also like to take credit for? Does that explain any of your actions while in council?
Mr. Hackey, would you like for me to address that right now?
I would not, thank you. I'd like to finish first. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You said I would like to finish first.
You would like to finish first, thank you.
Thank you. Since you so desperately want to pat yourselves on the back and boast about what you did, let me help you out a little bit with that. Let's take a look at what you actually did. So you waived the sewer bill for all residents of Mason. This amounted to roughly $50 per household in a community where the average income is 89,569. So while a very small number of Mason residents may have benefited from this, the reality is the vast majority of residents don't even notice an additional $50 and aren't likely to be compelled to go out and spend it. This was done at a cost of $750,000 to give each household 50. You spent roughly $440,000 on gift cards, of which $230,000 is estimated to have been redeemed by 74 businesses. This equates to roughly $3,100 per business, assuming an equal amount was spent at each. And many homeowners, including myself, never received a gift card, so that wasn't even available for us to spend to local businesses. You created a forgivable loan program in the amount of $700,000, of which $489,500 was distributed to 84 businesses. I want to point out some interesting facts. The original proposal presented by Mr. Stricula was a request for $500,000 in forgivable loans to assist Mason businesses, Mason businesses, and suggested that it be administered by the CDC, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, nonprofit group associated with the maid chamber. In the end, what did get done was just under $500,000 was granted to Mason businesses and was administered by the CIC. So a nearly identical program with one huge exception. It took months to get it done. It created huge fight amongst the members of council and the public. Oh, and the mayor gets to take credit for it. Are we starting to detect a pattern here? In the end, it's becoming clear, at least to me, that you're not interested in doing what's in the best interest of the small businesses of Mason. Your interest is in building your resume to ride on for your next political aspiration. Is a seat on the bus to Columbus what's on the political ladder for you? Isn't that what this is really about? Otherwise, why is it so important for you to take credit for it? That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I jump in and ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Mr. Hackey? Can I ask you a question? I was just going to ask, are, are you a member of the Chamber of Commerce? Okay, so you say, yes, you are, okay. So it seems like you're upset that the chamber did not get the $500,000 that the three members of, of council wanted to try to pass. And that's a, you know, that's a, to me, that's a special interest group that kind of was pushing to get this money. So I, I think that everything you say comes across a little tainted since you're a member of that, so.
Mr. Hunter Law, this is not about me being a member of the chamber. This isn't even about who administered the program. You're not even listening to what we're saying. That's been the whole point all along. You're not listening to what we're saying. The point isn't that you didn't approve 202043 in its original form. The fact is, you did the exact same thing, but you turned it over to the CIC instead of the CDC. My point, you should have done that in the first place. You should have done it in the first place. You should have worked together and done your jobs instead of creating a fight. You could have done the exact same thing you did, which is almost exactly what was recommended in the first place. And you could have done it quicker, you could have gotten this money out into the, into the community, and you could have done it in a way that everybody would have felt happy about it.
And I, I agree that when you have, when you have three members of council wanting to do what you were suggesting and four members not, right? And then you say we should all came together, right? So we were trying to do that, we were trying to find what, please?
Not what you were doing.
Well, I, I think if you go back and watch the tapes, you'll see that's what we were trying to do.
I watched every minute of every council meeting since March. I have watched them several times. I've seen everything.
We were really pushing to kind of move past this, and we keep getting members coming forward like yourself and reliving the past here, and I think you complimented Vice Mayor Gilb on what he had to say tonight, saying, and yet then you turn around and start throwing mud again. And I'm just like, what's, I don't know what the point is unless you just want to keep, you're still bitter and upset. We get that. And so I, I think that what we passed was four times greater than what you were asking for originally, so.
You're doing exactly what you've always been doing. This isn't about slinging mud. In fact, it's a response. Every time I've come up here, it's been a response to perverting what has happened or the, the narrative of what's happened. I had stopped. Then Mrs. Grossman presented her report, so I came back.
So are we allowed to respond to the attacks that come from the pulpit, from the citizens? Can we defend, can we defend ourselves?
Return to that?
Right, I'm just saying. So at what point does it quit?
That's what I would like to know.
Okay, well, I tell you what, we'll stop our comments, you stop yours, and let's try to move forward for the sake of the city.
I would love that, but I don't believe that's going to happen.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I will not bring it up again if you'll promise not to bring it up again.
I will not bring it up next.
Well, so are you going to respond to my comments tonight, or are we done right here?
You're not done, I'm fine.
Okay, well, let's, let's be done as a council and move forward. We all love the city, you know, we're all trying to do what's best. We're all trying to help the small businesses. I think what we passed was wonderful. So I, I think we're all trying to do, we just had two different avenues to, to achieve it.
As long as the facts are not perverted, the way they keep getting perverted, I've said my piece.
Well, I think all the reports are out, and everybody can go back and watch themselves on the video. Every, everything we've done was on, is on camera, so I mean, I don't know why we have to keep going down this road, so.
I would love to not keep.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I add something really quick?
Yes.
The, the biggest, I mean, let's point something out here. Here's the sanctimonious talk from up here is, is one of the things that bothers me the most. We've had, we, the Chamber of Commerce is a nationally recognized outfit that works in almost every city in the country. And up here, I want to have a good relationship with them. And you just called them a special interest group, which, does that have a positive or negative connotation to it? Tell me.
I guess you're referring, you're asking me that, so. Yeah, so for me, I think it's accurate. You know, they have what they're doing, they're, they are.
You're calling the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce a special interest group, which has a negative connotation. It's an absolute shame that we sit up here and do that, and I would like to publicly apologize to the chambers here in Mason and throughout the country if any other cities have that exact same.
I don't think it's negative.
That is terrible.
Okay, hold on.
But I was a member of the chamber for how many years? I mean.
Special interest group? Is, that's not, that's not positive. That is not positive.
We have to maintain order, excuse me, direct our comments to the chair. It is the Chamber of Commerce's job to work with government to promote commerce. And there's not, in my view, it's not a negative connotation to be a special interest group. They're lobbying and advocating for small businesses in, at the local level, and that's great, and that's what they should do. And so, you know, that's my opinion on it, I don't think that's a bad thing, and.
Yes. You're, you're telling me that through the talk track of government from the federal to the state to the county to the city, you're trying to tell me the Chamber of Commerce wants to be considered a special interest group in lobbying? I mean, that's not what they're doing. They are the backbone of our, our cities. I mean, they are the ones that continuously help small businesses. And, and here we are, and that is the issue I have. Like I said, we're sitting here acting as if they are the enemy of the city, that we can't work with them because they're a special interest.
Councilmember Chance?
They are actually doing what we should be doing, advocating for small businesses.
And we absolutely have, and let's not characterize this as, as treating them as an enemy of the city. That's never happened. You've made that characterization, Mr. Hackey's made that characterization, I've never made that characterization. We have a long history.
Duplicity, and I apologize, Vice Mayor Gilb, and regardless.
Okay, we're at the. Okay, we're at the.
It was, it's spot on. But again, you brought it up, Mr. Hunter-Law. You know, we could move on until we get a 60-page, whatever you want to call that thing. And you weren't even brought up. It wasn't even pertaining to you. So, you know, that's my, that's my beef, and I am.
My point is, they, when I was a member of the chamber, they advocated for me. That's what they did. So they are special interests for all the members, their members, which I was a member of. That was, I thought what they did. So I'm sorry if that crosses inaccurate. I thought that's what the chamber did. They were out helping all their members, which were small businesses, which I'm a member of and was till recently.
Make up your mind which way you want to go.
No.
Let's get back to civility. Did anyone else have any comments for Mr. Hackey before I respond? Okay, I do appreciate what you shared, Vice Mayor Gilb. Civility is critical, and it's something that we've struggled to find at times on Mason City Council since the end of March especially. Mr. Hackey, I'll try to, I took a few notes while you spoke. We've been working hard with small businesses downtown. You mentioned Hamilton is working with their chamber to look at how they can help supply heaters and different things to have, I'm assuming, to use their outdoor spaces throughout the winter, and that's great. That's what chambers should do, and we have done a lot of that. We've been working out parking situations so that local restaurants can use their parking lots for outdoor space. We put wood chips down in different lots in downtown Mason to add additional parking. We finished our lot at Fifth Third Bank, which partnered with us so that we have more spaces down there. And I know our staff has been checking in on businesses. Our staff walked door-to-door to hand out information about our small business relief programs and has been very attentive, and we have a pulse on our small business community here at the City of Mason, and so does the Chamber of Commerce. And we have a longstanding record of working well with the Chamber of Commerce. This particular issue, four of us wanted a different program with more government oversight. It was a large grant of public funds that was requested. Forgivable loans was pitched with the CDC. They mentioned they were not equipped to handle forgivable loan system. They wanted a grant program. That's half a million dollars of public funds for a grant program. And this is from their literature. It would be redistributed by an anonymous selection committee that they choose with sole discretion over allocation of funds. The CDC is the same group of people as the chamber. It's a separate financial entity, but they're partnering together. That's also in their literature, that they partnered. That was right out of the gate. And so I know it's been hard for you to accept that that's what we chose. We developed a program where we could monitor it through the CDC. We created a broader program to provide opportunity for as many businesses as possible, a longer application period. That was another issue with the CDC's proposal. It was a three-day application period with the selection committee, and then a two-day execution period after that. And we wanted something that was more open, to give us an opportunity to advertise and make it more accessible to as many businesses in Mason as we could. The sewer fund, yes. Every household in Mason, that's about 10,000 households, got $50 of cash. We couldn't figure out how to do a tax rollback in short order, so that, they didn't get $50 in cash. They didn't have to pay their July sewer bill, which is an average of $50 to $60 per household. And every single business in Mason benefited from that by having their sewer fee waived in July, and that's about 1,000 businesses. So depending on how much they use, they got that financial benefit. And then, yes, we had the forgivable loan program. We had a gift card program that did go to the CDC. $160,000 was budgeted for that. That was changed to a voucher program, but still, I think, 40-some businesses benefited from that and got $3,500 each in cash to help with their short-term cash flow issues. So the programs were different. The program that we developed was broader funded, and I want the staff to get credit. I want the entire council to get credit. I want the small businesses that are working day in and day out to keep their dreams alive and support their families to get the credit. You have characterized me inappropriately and inaccurately. You've made assumptions about what I think or how much help I need. And let's see, I'll go back to my notes. You know, when you come in with characterizations like that, it's just not helpful. But if you have specifics, like suggestions for heaters or things we can do to help these small businesses with their outdoor spaces throughout the winter, that's something we can work with. If you want to talk to us about the infrastructure downtown or different things that we can do that's within our wheelset, those things are helpful. The characterizations are not helpful. And, you know, you've many, many times come in and talked about my spouse, and I just have a hard time believing if there was a different person sitting in this chair that was not a woman, that you wouldn't come in and ask about her marriage, his marriage. I just have a hunch. If you want to talk to the county commissioner, they meet every Monday, every Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. You can go in there. To quote him from some third-party source's hearsay, I don't think he said that, but I don't know. I'll go ask him. But I mean, that kind of stuff just isn't helpful. This isn't the forum for that. If you're worried about my political future, that was another comment you made. You know, I don't know what my political future is. Right now, I'm trying to work with this council and be as productive as we possibly can right here and now in Mason, and we're, hopefully, we're going to start getting a lot of work done. I'm trying to see if there are any other questions that you asked. I don't think so, but hopefully, if you have any more concerns about whom I've chosen as a spouse, or if I'm his property and I, you know, am his puppet, or whatever that is, feel free to contact me personally instead of in this forum. And I did challenge Mr. Steg Bauer, and he's here, and I apologized to him, because I realized, I started making assumptions. I had seen some comments that he made on social media. I did not do a good job of framing that in the moment, and I did apologize to him. And Mr. Steg Bauer, I can see you, and I am apologizing to you again, because I did get a little bit upset last time you were here, because you kept asking me the question. As for the report, I'm responsible for every word, every dotted I, every crossed T. I'm still working on it. I had to take some time off for a medical procedure, and so I have not finished my appendix, but I'm still working on that, and I will get it to you when I'm ready. Anything else in old new business, or no, recognition of visitors? Any other visitors? Okay, I think we're done, and we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll see you next time.